Are these supposed to be on?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be red is on.
It's red one top.
Red's off, okay.
Mary Ann, we can't hear you.
Can't hear.
Microphone should be green.
Was greens.
Is she still on?
Turn, don't go turn, don't touch it, they're on. Am I right?
You can't say nothing.
Mary Ann, we can't see you, okay? No. We heard you before.
No. I'll be right back.
Any luck?
She just went offline.
She did?
Yep.
Alright, I'm gonna...
I know.
Here she is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
What?
Okay, you're on, you're live now, go ahead.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Go ahead, proceed with the meeting, you're good to go.
Yes.
Alright. I'm gonna stop.
We are...
Yeah, we can't hear you.
It's late. So I am calling... ...the November... ...sixteen regular meeting to order. Obviously, this is the first... ...first virtual meeting that... ...I'm trying to... Please bear with us. We need a pledge of... I pledge... Diligent. Can you hear me? Lisa?
Mary Ann, could you call using the phone number that I gave you, the 1-877 number?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Run the meeting.
Okay.
I'll be there shortly, okay?
Okay. I called this meeting to order Monday, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Stand for the diligence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I am truly public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地, and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Robert DeSena.
We're ready.
Ken Demers.
Anthony Dubona.
If you can hear me.
Rachel Ryan.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Robert Tallick.
I would like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, is there a second?
I second that.
Any questions, changes, commissions? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? Any objections?
I'll abstain.
Anthony?
Anthony.
If Mary Ann comes back, you have the chairman's report, there was a couple correspondence will be on file. Tom Andrews' report?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, there's a public comment beforehand, I don't know if we, number four on the agenda?
I apologize for that, we will do that now, public comment?
Hi, Camera thirty-one Cottage Place, I have a couple of comments. One comment is, I continue to tell you that I believe it's unethical for any member of the town council to serve on a board or a commission, because you make appointments to those boards and commissions, and as we witnessed, had to watch someone recuse themselves at the last meeting. This may not be in the ethics ordinance or the charter, but it should be. And certainly, if you disagree with me, you can do what you usually do and get an opinion of the town attorney. But to watch, you have to recuse yourselves because you actually sit on a board or a commission that you're appointing people to, it's just not ethical. And the other comment I have is that I really am not very happy with the fact that we're paying our new town manager his full salary while he's being trained for the next two months by the outgoing interim town manager, when I see many times when you hire people that they have a ninety-day period before they get their full pay. And certainly in this circumstance, I don't know what the contract negotiation was, but I think that that should have been included because I really, it's everyone's tax money, but it's my tax money too, and I just don't feel that that was appropriate when I see it allocated differently for other people who are hired for jobs. And certainly, there's a training period that's going on right now that's much longer than it has been in the past, thank you.
Anyone else with a public comment? Mary Ann, we still can't hear you if, look like you were trying to talk. Any other public comments?
Jonathan, can you hear me at this point?
I can hear you now, but it seems like it's delayed twenty seconds or more from your video. Hearing no other public comments, so closed public comment. Town manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and council members. I would like to mention the great work done by the members of the town clerk and registrar voter offices.
I don't know what the issue is.
Watertown increased its voter roll by approximately nine hundred voters to approximately fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven registered voters. Of the twelve thousand, nine hundred and six votes casted, there were three thousand, three hundred absentee ballots. In January, the city of Watertown filed a motion for summary judgment against the town regarding water and sewer rates. In response to that filing, Attorney Stevens of Slaven, Stauff, and Scott filed an objection, which has been scheduled for oral arguments on Thursday, December tenth, I'm sorry, December tenth, two thousand and twenty at two P M. As you are all aware, members of the town clerk's office had a close contact exposure of COVID nineteen on election day, and as a result of this exposure, the office has been closed until November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. All employees have since tested negative, but that particular department will remain closed until Wednesday. The TARP, the department, will be deep cleaned before reopening. In addition, last Thursday's data from the state of Connecticut for Watertown had reported an additional one hundred and eighteen cases over the past two weeks. The increased uptick of COVID nineteen is concerning in regard to the safety of our employees and to further ensure town offices remain staffed. Today, Monday, November fifteenth, all town offices, including Central Office of the Board of Education, have been closed to walk in traffic, only those with appointments are allowed in the building. Earlier today, the police department notified the town manager's office that there are two officers under quarantine and two that have tested positive with COVID nineteen. The police department has gone back to a phase one implementation of shifts and restrictions. Of the four officers, three of them are supervisors. Interim Chief Berniger has re-implemented the OIC Officer in Charge program temporarily. This will have an impact on overtime expenditures moving forward. Also today, the highway department has also had a significant exposure. Our Director of Public Works, Roy Kavanaugh, is working on splitting the manpower and adjusting the hours of work to accommodate COVID restrictions and to maintain his working crews. Our purchasing agent, Donna Ford, is researching alternative ways for us to disinfect the town hall offices as we move forward. We are looking at different types of backpack sprayers that will disseminate a fine mist of disinfectant that will kill the virus on contact. Appropriate as our start tonight, the town has purchased twenty iPads, nine which will be issued to the town council members to improve the participation access and quality of virtual meetings. The additional eleven iPads will be used by commission members at their individual meetings. This purchase is again an effort to improve the quality of virtual meeting connections. I T will be setting up the iPads over the next two weeks. We are anticipating that members of the council and commissions can conduct their meetings at town hall with a safe social distance policy. We've hired a new assessor, Faith Richardson. She has been transitionally training with her past assessor, Donna Murphy, for the past three weeks, and today was her official first day. Today, we also conducted interviews for the position of the building official with the hope of hiring a new building official shortly. I personally have been out meeting and re-acquainting with department heads and staff. I have met with the majority of departments. Interdepartmental visits are restricted at this time, so I will finish with the remaining departments when it's safer. I would also like to mention the passing of two individuals that have contributed to the town of Watertown. Novello Rogirio, he was an M D, served as interim town manager sometime during nineteen sixty-three and sixty-five, and also served on the town council during that time. He did a second interim stint as town manager in nineteen ninety as well. And one of our longtime employees, Robert Zappone, who worked for the engineering department for approximately forty years, has passed as well. And on a good note, I would also like to report that we have a new centenarian in Watertown. Gertrude Moran celebrated her one-hundredth birthday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, end of report.
Thank you, Marc. And move on to a new business. Guess I could do the motions as well. Consider appointments to boards and commissions. I moved to... ...Kowski fifty-three, Cutler Knoll, Watertown, as a Board of Education designee on the Cable Vision Advisory Board for a term to expire June two thousand and twenty-one. This appointment is to fill the unexpired term of Tom Lambert, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Abstain, motion passes. Two, I moved to reappoint Edward P. Dalton, eighty-three Bryant Road, Watertown, as a regular member of the Conservation Commission Inland Weapons Agency for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Abstentions? Motion pass, passes. I moved to reappoint Mark Ramo, Junior, thirty, Merrimack Street, Oakville, as a constable for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-three, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Or, I moved to reappoint Robert Porter, seventy-one Cherry Street, Watertown, as a constable for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-three, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposition? Abstentions? Motion passes. Lambo, forty-six Pine Street, Watertown, as a constable to fill the unexpired term of Anthony Coppola to expire January two thousand and twenty-three, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number seven, I moved to reappoint Richard Antonetti, three ninety-seven, Kimberly Lane, Watertown, as a regular member of the Police Commission for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-six, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Through the chair, through the chair.
Yes.
We missed one of the appointments prior to Mr. Antonetti on the list.
Oh, sorry, I'll go back to that one.
Yes, sir.
So number seven, Richard Antonetti, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We'll go back up to number six. I moved to appoint Jamie Hobart Lambo as a regular member of the Police Commission to fill the unexpired term of Anthony Coppola expired January twenty-three. Second, or is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number eight, I moved to reappoint Margaret Jermaine, two five five, Morris Town Line Road, Watertown, as a member of the Parking Recreation Commission for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion passes. Number nine, I moved to reappoint John M. Donahue, three nineteen, Tumston Road, Watertown, as a member of the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone oppose? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number ten, I moved to reappoint Pat Rinaldi, three seventy, Kimberly Lane, Watertown, as a member of the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number eleven, I moved to reappoint Edward G. Wilk, fifty, Ice House, Oakville, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Number twelve, I moved to appoint James Sir... ...one nine nine Beach Ave, Watertown, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four, is there a second?
You do wrong.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Number thirteen, I moved to reappoint Keith... ...Francine, three six four Williamson Circle, Oakville, as a member of the Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire January two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Any favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. We'll move to B. I moved to approve the resolution setting dates, times, and place for conducting regular town council meetings for two thousand and twenty-one, as well as the method for calling special town council meetings. Please note that meetings will begin at seven P M versus currently at seven thirty.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. C, I moved to authorize a settlement agreement with D S A Realty LLC for a tax appeal, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. D. I moved to approve the sale of the town hall annex to David... I'm probably gonna mess up his last name, Aragima of Regency Real Estate LLC in the amount of four hundred and five thousand dollars, and also authorized the town manager, Mark Ramo, to execute documents on behalf of the town council to complete the sale, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comment or discussion? In the record, there were two bids that came in and the other one was less than this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? I'm gonna abstain. For the town hall, I moved to approve the sale of the town hall to John Sullivan for one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and also authorized the town manager, Mark Ramo, to execute documents on behalf of the town council to complete this sale, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? I also abstain on this one. Motion passes? Okay, E, I move to authorize an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Police Department over time budget. Second. Any comments? I just want to mention that this was a reimbursement from, uh, distracted driving high visibility enforcement through the state. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion passes? I move to approve appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of nine hundred, sorry, nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars to the Police Department overtime budget fund received from the federal government for FBI gaming task force and drug enforcement activities. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes? G, I move to approve appropriations from the General Fund, one in the amount of eight thousand dollars for the additional funds needed for the replacement of a police vehicle due to a motor vehicle accident, and fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents from the process of the insurance claim due to the motor vehicle accident. Is there a second?
Second.
For the chair?
Second.
Here.
Yes?
I believe Chief Burniger's here, he can explain that.
Okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
It worked. Okay, and during the month of September, gas stations and convenience stores in the town of Watertown and several other Litchfield County towns are being burglarized during the overnight hours. The Watertown Police Department Detective Bureau, in collaboration with the State Police and several other local police departments, developed suspects and began a surveillance operation. On October second, information was obtained that the suspects had rented a U-Haul truck in Torrington and were likely going to be using the truck to commit burglaries that night. All area departments were on high alert. Around two AM that night, Officer Quarles of the Watertown Police Department, while conducting surveillance at the Random Art Gas Station up on Litchfield Road, spotted the suspect U-Haul truck traveling north on Litchfield Road at a very high rate of speed. Officer Quarles notified the State Police that the U-Haul appeared to be traveling into the town of Morris. A short time later, several troopers located the U-Haul truck and began following the vehicle eastbound on Judd Farm Road back into Watertown. The U-Haul truck turned south onto Litchfield Road, at which time several troopers and Watertown officers were following the truck. The State Police attempted to initiate a felony stop on the U-Haul truck by boxing the truck in, at which time the driver and suspect, uh, took evasive action and intentionally swerved left, ramming a State Police Cruiser. That collision caused the U-Haul truck to spin one hundred and eighty degrees, now facing northbound and directly into the path, path to travel of Watertown Police Officer Matthew Brown, who was operating Cruiser number three, a two thousand sixteen Ford Interceptor SUV. The U-Haul truck and Officer Brown's Cruiser collided, which brought the U-Haul truck to a stop, and all suspects were apprehended. Cruiser number three sustained heavy front end damage, while Officer Brown sustained minor injuries for which he was treated at a local hospital and released. Cruiser three was found to be a total loss by insurance adjusters. The Watertown Police Department does not possess enough vehicles to absorb the loss of Cruiser number three, which was a frontline vehicle with approximately seventy thousand miles on it. We are seeking to purchase a new two thousand twenty Ford Police Interceptor SUV to replace Cruiser number three. The total purchase price of a new vehicle with installed equipment is approximately thirty-six thousand dollars. The town of Watertown will be receiving an insurance payout of fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight. The difference is twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-two, which will be needed for an outright vehicle purchase. I have been able to reallocate twelve thousand dollars from the Police Department's approved fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget for this purchase, but I will be short about eight thousand dollars, and am respectfully requesting the approval of the town council for an eight thousand dollar appropriation to complete the purchase of that vehicle. I appreciate your time.
Job well done, Chief.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion pass? Uh, H, I move to set a special town meeting to be held on December seventh, twenty twenty, at six PM to consider an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand four hundred and ten dollars for the Main Street Roadway Safety Audit Improvement Project. Funds will be reimbursed through the twenty twenty Small Town Economic Assistance Program. I believe it, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand two hundred and five dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, is Roy, that could help explain how it's being paid for? Project? Right? He's not, but he's not talking. I did have one comment, I'm gonna see if it's for Roy or for Susan. Um, in the documents, it mentions a total project, um, two hundred and fifty-six thousand four-ten, half of that is being reimbursed through the STEEP grant. Um, and then it mentions the balance of the project, or approximately forty-seven thousand five ninety, um, can be funded out of current future line items. So I guess my question is, there's another roughly eighty grand? Is that what's being asked to come out of the General Fund? Or where's the other eighty thousand coming from? Sue?
Good evening, everyone. Um, Roy must not be on the meeting tonight. I believe the rest of the funds are gonna be budgeted through, um, the regular budget process to finish up the project. The reimbursement is correct, Jonathan, the hundred and twenty-eight thousand two oh five.
Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair?
Yep.
This has been a collaborative process ongoing since late two thousand sixteen, in response to not one but two tragic occurrences along the Main Street corridor, in collaboration with the Police Department, the Police Commission, Public Works, the State Department of Transportation, and the result of this is now receiving the grant and the ongoing process to ensure future public safety, pedestrian safety, vehicular safety along the Main Street corridor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes?
It's Mark Ramo. Uh, Mr. Kavon always having issues with his computer, he's on his way up to the third floor to, uh, access another computer if you have questions for him.
I'm, you know, fed at this time, is there any other questions, uh, people have?
Jonathan, can you hear me now, it's Mary Ann?
I can, Mary Ann.
How a loo. Alright, we have to take the vote on that issue, and then we're ready to move on.
Roy's coming in.
Roy Kavanaugh, can you hear me now?
Yes. Did anyone have any other questions at this time? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Uh, I move to approve an appropriation from the General, oops, sorry. I move to approve an appropriation from the General Fund in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand three eighty for the contractual payouts to employees who have left or are leaving employment within the fiscal year. Is there a second?
Second.
Jonathan, before, before we move forward, we need Sue Zappone to read the list of the individuals and the amount.
Yes, um, I am requesting this appropriation to cover the cost of employees who are contractually obligated, that we are contractually obligated to pay, um, sick time and vacation time when they leave employment. I have the animal control officer leaving employment, along with the police chief, the building official, one detective, one lieutenant, and the assessor. The total request is the two hundred and forty-eight thousand three eighty-four.
Sue, can you attach, um, or forward to us, so that it is attached for the minutes, the individual breakdown on those payouts, please?
Yes, I can, no problem.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Um, may I continue, Mary Ann, did you want to take over running the meeting, or do you want me to just continue?
Okay, let's try it and see.
Okay.
We are on item J. If you would make the motion, please.
Okay, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the town manager to next Q on behalf of the town of Watertown, agreements with the State of Connecticut Department of Energy Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any, are there any questions?
Is it possible to get an explanation of what this means exactly?
This is something we normally do, we have changed town manager, so we need to authorize the current and acting town manager in the same capacity as previous town manager had.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes? Moving on to item K, Jonathan, if you would.
I move to approve a bid waiver for the purchase of information technology network equipment and services for the Watertown Police Department to be provided by S and M Computers LLC for an amount not to exceed seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
If I could ask, Josh, would you comment on this course?
Certainly, uh, last year, the Police Department hired S and M Computers of Middlebury, Connecticut to assess the state of the Police Department's information technology network and report on the department's future IT needs. Four critical needs were identified during this assessment, which consists of an email upgrade, a firewall upgrade, a nine-one-one call recorder upgrade, and a central network upgrade. Each of these projects were requested and approved in the Police Department's current budget. The server upgrade project consists of consolidating several older servers, which are at the end of their serviceable lifespan and no longer supported by the manufacturer. Be consolidated into two new virtualized redundant servers. All data will be stored in a new state-of-the-art data storage device, which will be backed up to the cloud for catastrophic recovery. This network arrangement will reduce the number of possible failure points on the network. It will increase the network's speed, reliability, and efficiency, and eliminate the need to bring the network down for a routine service. The Watertown IT Department, in collaboration with the Police Department, is seeking a bid waiver and wish to award this service upgrade project to the information technology company S and M Computers of Middlebury, Connecticut, for the following reasons. Number one, S and M Computers has performed satisfactory work on the Watertown Police Department's network in the past. Number two, S and M Computers specializes in engineering and servicing law enforcement IT networks, and is CGIS certified, which is required by Connecticut law to perform work on law enforcement IT networks. Number three, S and M Computers designed and quoted this server upgrade project. Number four, S and M Computers is a local company. And finally, number five, S and M Computers will be purchasing all of the hardware associated, uh, and associated licenses through Y and S Technologies, which is an authorized dealer with a national cooperative purchasing alliance, which is a nationwide state cooperative purchasing contract with over ninety thousand agencies as members, which includes the town of Watertown. The hardware and licensing costs for this project total sixty-six thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and fourteen cents, and labor is estimated as six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for total project cost, not to exceed seventy-three thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and fourteen cents, which is secured in the current Police Department budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Uh, item I?
I move to-
Sorry, item L, uh, Jonathan.
Yep. I move to approve the suspense list as recommended by the town tax collector.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone have a question? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. There's a question?
I believe the tax collector-
Tax collector's here, she can tell us.
Okay, well, for those that don't know- Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so a suspense list, I'm required to put at least one account on each year by law, and the auditors also recommend it. What it is, is I give you a list of all the accounts that I feel are not collectible any longer, that I have done all that I can do to get that money in, and I know the chances of collecting it are very slim. The reason you put it on suspense is to make your collectible number more realistic. So when finance is looking at my outstanding list, they're gonna use a realistic number when budgeting what we're gonna collect for the year. So as you could see, one of the lists is sixty-six thousand dollars this year. If you look through it, it's only ten businesses, and some of them went back six or seven years. I have, they were with collections for years. Um, actually, Mark Ramo would know, very familiar, one of them, um, Paramount Construction, we ended up going to, um, seize all their equipment, and we sold it at auction. Now, we didn't sell all of it to recoup the taxes, but we did what we could. I have to suspend the rest because they're no- because they're no longer in business. All the other ones, we did the same thing as far as we, did the best we could to collect. So when I find that we've used everything possible in my means, we put it on suspense. Now, I could still collect on those accounts for fifteen years. Out of business, they're not gonna get back in business, so those are pretty much not gonna happen. But the other ones that are on the suspense are deceased. Sometimes, some family member might come in and say, hey, I wanna make my wife's, you know, name clear. I wanna pay her taxes. So we still go and collect on a lot of these accounts. This past year, we collected about eight thousand dollars. So even though they're suspended, it's really just to make the collections more realistic for finance and proposing what I might bring in for the following year. So it's a, it's a good, healthy financial move to do. Any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No questions. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Or anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to item M, Jonathan.
I moved to approve a resolution authorizing an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes unanimously. M, item M?
I moved to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes unanimously. And last but not least, item O.
I moved to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between line items.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Absolute aye. Very much.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
All right.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.